Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the school board meeting for July 13th. If I could ask the superintendent to please just take the roll call.
Ann Mayer. Carol Chelman.
Here.
Kent LaPage.
Here.
Dexter Lake.
Here.
Rebecca Emerson.
Here.
Ann Walker.
Here.
Mitch Shulman.
Here.
Tom Martin.
Here.
Leslie Stevens.
Here.
Lisa Sweet.
Here.
Linda Brulette.
Here.
Excellent. Lister Flag. So, join me in the pledge of allegiance. A moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, basically, there's no public commentary. Nobody's here, so we'll just move on to the superintendent's report, and then we'll get to the business at hand.
Yes, well, I apologize. Amy had intended to bring formal printouts of what you received in PDF on your form, but she's home mailed this evening, so we'll see that you get those. We'll put those in the mail in the morning. It was all relative to the superintendent's report. First of all, I'm pleased to announce that we have hired Jacqueline Nutter, who will fill the retirement in New Franklin. She's a speech and language pathologist. She has a bachelor's in speech and language from US, the University of Maine at Farmington, as well as a master's in communications disorder from UMass Amherst, and since 2003 has actually been filling that role at Acton Elementary School up in Maine. So, we're happy to have her. Steve and I had the good fortune to actually attend the commissioners' conference at the end of June and wanted to share with you essentially her strategic plan, or the four key points she's looking forward to in terms of advancing New Hampshire's agenda. In large measure, it pretty much puts us in line for the federal dollars with race to the top. It's really in those four key categories around key teacher leaders, principals, quality teachers, the whole notion about data analysis, kind of turnaround schools, the lowest 5 percent, lowest 5 percent performance-wise, turning those schools around, and data analysis. So, those four key strands are kind of what she's targeting in her strategic plan. You had some correspondents. Jackie Gravel, actually, after 18 years of service to the school department, has announced that she will resign effective at the end of June. You have a thank-you note from Philip Boynton, who was honored and appreciated his gift at the last school committee meeting, school board meeting. And then I wanted to share with you, I thought this was interesting, through the good work of Ken Lynch, he working with New Hampshire Energy Smart Program, basically has been working for three or four years to kind of pay attention to the energy costs. And so, you'll see that for 2009, the state average was some 32 cents below what the state average is in terms of energy costs. Now, if you look three years ago, you'll see that we're pretty much the same as we were in 2009. There was a spike in '08, but essentially, he's done some good work there. And two of our schools will actually qualify for Energy Star, one of which is the high school, and ironically, the Sherburne School somehow is poised to...
I tried to correlate the numbers to the Energy Star, and it didn't seem to work for me, but I'm not going to ask for an explanation. I think it's terrific.
I wouldn't be the one to give it to you.
I'm going to ask my committee, though, to explain it to me.
And so, that's really the superintendent's report, and we'll get your copies of those materials, that Energy Star report, as well as the commissioner's strategic plan. And that's it.
Okay. Any quick questions? Does that strategic plan, actually, how does that apply to us? I mean, does it apply to us specifically?
Yes, I think she's going to have two key task force going on this fall. One around quality teachers and the initiative about connecting teacher performance and pay, et cetera, that whole notion that we heard earlier, as well as quality principals. In fact, Jeff Collins has been asked to serve as a principal on this task force through the fall as a member. So, there's some key pieces there. Steve, I don't know. Anything else going on in the short term?
No, a lot of the strategic plan is tied to the states pursuing the race-to-the-top application and the work that's going on at the federal level. So, you know, I think the work is ongoing in terms of some of the specifics, but it's clear that there'll be a number of different resources available, and many of which will be tied to these initiatives.
Okay. Great. Ann, and then Carol.
Okay. Lisa.
Steve, I saw in there that in 2010, they're targeting the adoption of a common core, really, by the end of the summer. Is that common to New Hampshire or a national core of standards, or do we know?
Yeah, it's the national core standards that each state is going through a process right now of whether or not to adopt.
Okay. Thank you.
Ann?
My question was, in reading the original race-to-the-top information quite a while ago, my assumption was that the lowest 5 percent meant, lowest 5 percent scoring schools overall. From the newer stuff, it sounds as though we're talking about taking care of the lowest 5 percent scorers of your population. So, which...
Yeah, they're still targeting schools, schools that...
School rather than 5 percent of the student group.
Carol?
That was sort of the same. Along those lines, a question I have, a couple of different things on this. First of all, I thought we did apply for race-to-the-top, and we didn't get it. So, we're just stacked at it again?
Right. That's true.
Okay. And then, everything I read nationally is talking about Obama wanting to help bring minorities and to narrow the gap. Do we really even fit in to this picture? You know, our population in this city? I mean, do we have minority groups that we're targeting to try to bring up? And just along those same lines, it seems to me that the race-to-the-top is all about helping schools that are severely underperforming. And none of our schools would even come close to what I think it is that this program is really about. These are schools where, you know, kids are not graduating from high school, you know, 50 percent of the population. So, I mean, how do we come, how do we get this money when we have such a tiny dropout rate?
Yeah, well, it's certainly a big question how poised New Hampshire is to be part of it, but generally, the difference in the first round application and the second in terms of our participation was when the state submitted the first time, they requested that districts submit some draft plans. What would you do if we were to get this? And if you recall, we submitted a rough plan that really involved the expansion of our existing partnership with Great Bay Community College and looking at some, you know, post-secondary opportunities we could expand for students, all falling into the same kind of notion of how do we address the dropout rate, et cetera, because it had a strong connection to the Lister Academy and the program we have there. The feedback the state got from the feds was, on the one hand, while there were, there was an acknowledgement of a lot of district participation and individual planning that went on, the feedback they got was the feds seemed to be looking for something that was a little more uniform and a little more state-driven in terms of what the plan would look like. And that's where the commissioner has done some work in putting together what you see before you, which is a draft of a kind of a strategic plan. And this is sort of taking the opposite approach, which is to say, here's what the state would do with the money, and then how would it support districts and fitting into that. And so, they're yet to see if they're going to be in a good standing for that second round or not.
Okay. Thank you.
Tom?
I was just raising my hand for Lisa, so...
Lisa again.
No, initially.
Thank you.
Wow. What a gentleman.
Thank you very much. I think it's important to remember that the achievement gap also can be a factor of socioeconomic factors as well.
True. Okay. So, moving on, so tonight, we've set aside some time to talk about the budget. We're starting conversations a little earlier than usual. So, I've asked the administration to help get us going with some sort of, a little exercise to get our creative juices flowing and having conversation. But, just so that, you know, I'm sort of clear, at least in my thinking, and so I'm just speaking for myself, I think, you know, one of the things I'd like to be able to accomplish either at the end of this evening or over the next short time in terms of the meetings we have about the budget, is I think we need to really figure out a way to give the administration some direction on all of these suggestions that have come through. Because if they're going to, if we're going to ask them to consider things, they're going to need to go back and do some research and make sure, come back to us and report, make sure that, in their minds, they feel and believe that what might be suggested is educationally sound. So, I think that's one of the goals that I'd like to accomplish, is that we come away with some direction. I also think, just to keep in the back of my mind, as I've been thinking about this over the last couple of weeks, you know, we started this year with the idea of level funding services. And we knew at that point in time that that was $2.45 million from the previous year to keep exactly the same services. So, we know we're down from that a lot, and I think, I don't know what the real numbers are for next year, but I'm going to assume, at least the way I think about it and approach it, that they're going to be similar to what they were this year in terms of being able to do level funding. So, at least in my mind, that's a number that we're starting out with, trying to understand what level services means, and then try to find efficiencies within that and see if we can bring it down. But, the other thing I just want to say is that, as I've been thinking about it, I think it's important to be clear to people that it's not just about cuts. I mean, we may find efficiencies and ways to save money, but I also think, from the school board's perspective, part of it is trying to find ways to build greater support in the community for people to fund the schools at a level that we suggest that we need. And I really think it's a combination of both of those approaches. We need to find savings, and we also need to let people know what it is we're doing in the schools and maybe do a better job of having people understand what happens day to day in the building, because I think, I don't know if people actually have a clear understanding of what education is like today in the classrooms. So, that's just my opening spiel. So, I'd like to turn it over to the administration for, to get my creative juices flowing.
All right. Well, Ed had asked if we might, there you go, if we might have some kind of activity or protocol to start off this morning, and I think I'm getting the reputation around protocols, so I have something to start you off with. And as, the struggle, I think, for us in this situation was to really get into some meaty conversation to get our juices flowing, so to speak. Most of the things that jumped to my mind were, involved small group conversation to start off, which doesn't necessarily play well in our TV audience, so we're kind of adapting this protocol a little bit for that. So, I'm not really going to go through this. I just give this to you because oftentimes, one of our dual purposes in these kinds of conversations is to also give you a window into some of the ways we try to have conversations with teachers and staff members around student learning. And so, this protocol is called the micro lab, and really, it's, the basic structure of it is to have two or three prompting questions that we would, in this case, go in around to answer. And on the back are just some of the, kind of the norms, if you will, to follow. And the real key here, in terms of what we'll do right now, is to allow each person, I'm going to suggest two minutes at maximum, to respond to the prompt individually. So, it's not a discussion. It won't be a back and forth, and I'd request one of our norms be that you don't jump into somebody else speaking, and just, we're just going to let that person speak for up to two minutes, and then we're going to move, we'll go around to the right, for example, and just move around the circle. So, it's really just meant to get us going. It's not meant to get into a back and forth deep discussion. It's just to get out some initial thoughts. So, you have some norms there. I'd suggest confidentiality probably isn't a norm that's appropriate right now, given the fact that you're being broadcasted. But, sometimes that is important, as teachers have conversations about individual students and student needs, so I just point that out. But, don't assume you have any here. So, I'm going to read, I'm going to read one question at a time, and then I'm just going to give you a few, well, I'll give you about 30 seconds just to reflect on that question, and then whoever might be ready to respond to it, we'll start with them, and then we're just going to go to their right and just go around the circle. And one of the questions is meant to reflect backwards on this past year's budget process, and one of the questions is meant to look forward to this coming years. So, the first question is this. In reflecting on this year's budget process, what is one thing you feel worked well in determining budget priorities and/or communicating decisions? That is to say, what was effective about our practice? So, that question is focused on you, on us, on a conversation. It's not what factors were favorable to us. It's not anything that was outside of our control. It's what do you think we did well in this past year's budget process? And just choose one thing, and if you could speak, you'll have up to two minutes to speak to it. Clarifying question, Leslie.
No, I'm just...
Oh, you're ready?
I am.
Oh, well, I was going to give a couple more seconds for people to think.
I'm sorry, you're my great...
Any clarifying questions on the questions? Everybody understand?
We means all of us.
Yes.
We doesn't mean you.
No. It's all about me, right? No. No, as a team.
Right.
So, we'll start with Leslie, we're going to go to her right, and we'll just go around.
Well, this isn't a we. I'll start with this one. It's not a we. I do have a we. But, I thought that the presentation that Ed did and the information that the two of you put together this year was phenomenal. It's the best that I've ever seen. So, I wanted to say that to both of you. I thought it was absolutely phenomenal. And I think what we did well was share information with the community as a group. I think Wave, the group Wave, that was the parent group, I think we were able to share a lot of information with them that they were able to bring forward. I'm sorry. I still can't, I'm sorry. But, I thought that that was very effective and probably the most effective parent group that we've, that I've seen, certainly, since I've been doing this.
Great. Lisa?
I think we also evolved our discussions. We didn't stay in the same place. I think we were able to sort of change where we were as needed and articulate what those different situations or cuts would be and what they would mean. I think that we had some good back and forth. Some of the initial suggestions, you know, were developed further so that we could understand them. I think with the, I'm thinking of the elementary technology program. When we kind of first heard about it, we really needed a lot more information, and that was provided. And some of the other things, I think we realized we couldn't do once we had more information on the table. So, I think it evolved well, so there was a good dialogue going on. I think that's it for now.
Great. Tom?
Being this my first budget process, I think the thing that kind of stood out for me was really the fact that we didn't necessarily look at just hard numbers and look at sitting there, trying to figure out where we could, you know, fit the square peg in the round hole, but we actually started to challenge the process of, not necessarily the budget process, but the process in which, you know, we manage education. We started taking a look at evaluating a lot of different aspects and trying to, you know, peel the onion back a little bit to say, are we doing it the right way? Those conversations have a long way to go, but I think that was really the first, you know, start that I felt that we really started to try to learn a little bit more about, you know, the process and the methodology that we use to run the schools, and that's a conversation that, you know, got started, I felt, and has a long way to go. But, that was a positive.
Ken?
I'll start off first with, again, applause towards the parents group Wave. I can guarantee you, if they did not come out and do the support that they did, we would have been at a true 0 percent, which would have been closer to about $800, $900,000. So, you know, parent support is outstanding. I compare them to a group in 1996, and this is the dilemma that I hope we can not have down the road. It was called SOS, Save Our Schools, back in 1996, which was very similar, had great rallies. Actually, they had almost 1,000 people show up at an outdoor rally that year. But, things got better, and the group went away. I think we need to make Wave more of a long-term group, and I think we need to ask for their support. I think we, this coming year and a few years to come, we have to make sure that they feel strongly needed. Now, I think what the press quite often forgets is that the superintendent came in with a budget much higher, and this group, within a matter of a week, cut 2.85 percent from what the superintendent had and where we really should be educationally. Now, this isn't whining. This is factual. This is what an individual that this city went through a process to ask to have, the superintendent, Ed McDonough, that we have sitting here, and where we want. And one of the first things we do is that this group stood behind him, but said, we know that this is too high. And I know we all sort of slid pieces of paper back and forth, and, you know, we came out, several of us, exactly where we knew we were going to, but what's sad is, is that most of what Ed had put on the table at that time, that very first night in January, didn't even make the light of day. And again, the positive out of that is that we know that that's what we cut. It was about 2.85 percent. So, that was very good to be able to do that so fast, but not so good for programming.
And Mitch? I have two quick things. One is, I think one thing that the administration did really well, from my perspective, is the amount of communication and the detail of the communication that was, that came out on a regular basis, the superintendent updates, I thought really, really helped people and keep people informed. I found that very helpful. And the other thing was, and again, it was the leadership, I think, of the administration, for me, anyway, is they really framed this with the phrase of working to save the core. And so, everything that they looked at throughout the course of this whole budget process really kept an eye on that inner circle and trying to keep that as intact as possible. I thought that was really great. I thought we did well with that. Ann?
Okay. I will add to that to one extent in terms of the budget. I think the fact that we were so united in the fact that we all felt very strongly about the core, we felt very strongly that any kind of thing that might be cut, we had to protect the core instruction, and I think every person, we're not always united in our thoughts, but we certainly were with that, which I thought was terrific. I thought we listened to each other. I thought we listened to other people. We listened to parents, to the schools, to the community, to the city council, and I felt we responded appropriately as well. Tried out many ideas that we had thought about in the past and looked at them in a new light and felt they needed to be discarded. I think probably the point that should be made is that the original budget that was much higher was made higher at our request. We wanted more technology. We wanted all the things that we listed, and of course, those things that we wanted were going to cost more. So, one other thing is we need to be clearer with parents in the future, particularly with the change in our elementary technology. I need it to be clear to me, so I can be clearer to them.
Carol?
I think, I think it was really important that we had a very civil conversation amongst ourselves about the budget, even though it was tense, and some of us maybe had strong opinions one way or another about certain issues. I think that set a good tone, and then I think our conversation with the city council, maybe even more importantly, was extremely civil. I didn't feel that at any point we got into a situation where it was sort of like a them against us and, you know, the newspaper having a field day with, you know, something someone said about a city council member or vice versa. So, I think that was an accomplishment in something like this, and I think along the same lines of a civil conversation, I'm really tuned into when people overstate things. I think it really takes away people's credibility, and I think the administration set the tone for all of us to not overstate our points, and I think that's one of the reasons we were as successful as we were with the city council, is that we didn't overstate our case. So, those two things.
Rebecca?
I thought our communication with the community was better this year than it has been in the past, and I really thought that evening meeting with the parents, that the parents groups had set up, was very successful for the first time out of the gate, because they have all these questions, and here we were able to actually answer. And if we, as individual board members, didn't know, the administration was right there, and we were able to get, get these things out there into the community. I thought that was excellent, and I would like to see that be in every year, you know, larger conversation. And then, one thing I noticed, there wasn't sort of one rallying cry from the community to get behind, and I think that really goes to credit you, that it was a very fair and balanced budget. Like, there wasn't, you know, the one, this one particular activity, or this one department, or this one school, or this one. So, the community came out supporting across the board, which I think was really good.
Dexter?
It's tough being last, isn't it?
Oh, Linda's last.
Oh, Linda's last. Oh, I feel better. So, you know, it's, when you look back on it, it's hard to, it's hard to remember that this was Ed's first budget.
Right.
I mean, think about it. Newly hired superintendent that came into this process, the toughest budget that we've had, at least in a decade, and he led, he led us, and I would say the city, through this effort. And I have to say, it was extraordinary, Ed. I mean, it was absolutely extraordinary. So, we knew how good Steve was, but you brought a level of leadership that was really impressive and kind of reaffirms in my mind the good choice we made. And that really was evident, both in the communication that was clear and concise, both with the board and with the community. Although, although the framework needs work, that concentric circle concept of protecting the core that you really brought to us gave us an approach to make our decisions, and I do think we need to refine it, but I think it helped us to have a very civil conversation, because I think, although we might not have spent a lot of time, I think we intuitively said, yeah, that's the, that's the right approach to think about this stuff. And it allowed us to frame our conversations in a way that was directional of solving the problem. And presumably, we're going to get a chance to say what would change and make better.
We have a second question.
No, it's all positive.
But, those are, those are the two pieces that jump out for me.
And Linda?
And last but not least, I think that, for me, thank you, Leslie. For me, I think that, having sat through, I think, 10 budgets now, I was amazed at the efficiency that central office had this year. Whenever a board member asked for some information or some numbers or some facts or some figures, it was always at the next meeting. And I think that that efficiency, there was never any lag time, so it didn't seem like anybody was ever in the dock. And I think that that was, nothing, you had a chance to fester and get on anybody's skin. The questions were always answered quickly and efficiently, so I think that that was, that was amazing to me, because I think it could have been much more contentious than it was. So, great for you, Ms. McDonough.
So, our next question, I'll give you a little more time to think about it, but this question, we, is probably the meatier one in terms of going forward, and really is only meant to be a very beginning to what will end up being a lot more in-depth conversation beginning this evening and carrying on for some time, I'm sure. But, we'd like you to think about, looking towards the future, what is one area you think will require more information to...
think will require more information to inform your decisions? Or one question that you believe needs to be answered better? So, we're just asking for one area and I'd ask you to, Dexter's.
You got my buzzer?
Okay. I'd ask you just to keep it to...
Think about it first.
To identifying that area or the question. Obviously, each one of these would take a lot of in-depth discussion, so I'd ask you not to go into a lot of in-depth discussion right now, but just give us a sense of what's one area and one question you're thinking about more information towards the future. So we'll start with Dexter and we'll go to the right.
Yeah, so broadly, we need more information related to our peer group. And it's, and it's not necessarily just a dollar cost comparison, but one of the things that we need to do with, with the wave group and the broader community is to help educate them. And it isn't all about cost cutting, but it's efficiency and effectiveness. And I don't think we do enough measuring ourselves against ourselves, but I know we don't do enough in measuring ourselves against, against a peer group. And so because of that, it's really hard in that vacuum to be able to assert something and convince people. And I think it's just gonna be more and more challenging because frankly, I think both supporters and detractors are, will continue to do their homework and they will bring facts to bear. And they, those facts can be put in a context that can sometimes distort. So, I think we've come a long way in gathering some competitive information, but we, and it may not be the peer group, and I might throw out the challenge to you guys, but we, we do need to be able to, to bring more facts to bear to this process along every, every dimension of at least our core, core programs, be it technology or whatever.
Right. Right. Okay. Linda?
Thank you.
Aren't you happy I went up first, Linda?
I'm really glad. So, it's just one area, right, Steve? Meeting. So, this is, I'm not an elected board member, obviously, so for me, I think that it would be very insightful for you, you, you the we, to gain information about how the schools do function during the course of the day and what it does look like to be a little nine-year-old kid in the fourth grade or wherever. I think that you need to, and sometimes you can't get that from somebody telling you, you have to see it yourself. So I don't know how you go about gaining that information, but I do think there's some validity in coming and spending a couple of hours. And I don't mean with a principal escort, I mean exercising your right to walk around and check things out and see how things go. Because when you talk about class size, as being protecting education, class size, you've gotta see what's going on with some of these little kiddos, you know, as we sit with 20 kids next year in your class, praying to God that they're all on level and not having tremendous issues, which there's no guarantee. But it would be really insightful, I think, for you all to glean information about the various, how things operate day to day. So when you make budgetary decisions, you're more well-informed.
Lisa?
One thought I have is that I would like to see if there's a way we can further involve the teachers in the process of creating the budget, at least from the very beginning. I think teachers, certainly the ones that I spoke with, felt left out of that loop and in several cases, had ideas that we hadn't even begun to think about that would streamline, make things more efficient, whatever. I think that there's a way to involve them more in that process. And I don't mean like just, you know, open it up for anything, but there's gotta be an effective way to encourage their participation. And I also, and I really don't know how to do this, but my, one of my biggest frustrations this year was the lack of process that I felt like the city council had in determining, you know, that meeting of the whole we had when all of a sudden there was just the announcement of minus 4 percent. I wish that there was a way that they could have those conversations among themselves before they just dropped that on us. And I don't know how, we don't really have control over that, but maybe we can ask for those conversations to start now, rather than at the meeting of the whole where we get these bombs dropped on us, you know, and have a better picture of what the budget looks like for the city as we're going into, you know, in October and November and December, as we're creating, as the superintendent and the principals are creating their budgets. Let's have conversations with the city about, you know, what's it looking like? Where are we at? What are we thinking versus, okay, we're at this meeting of the whole and we'd like you to come up with a budget of minus 4 percent, you know, which came out of the blue for us and I think for many of the city councillors. So, I'm not saying we have control over that, but I'd like to have that conversation with them in some way.
Right. Lisa?
What, one thing I've done lately is spend a little bit of time with the U.S. News and World Report article where we were selected as a bronze finalist in that. And I hadn't done that before and I think that, you know, it was really interesting to do that. They analyzed nearly 22,000 schools in the United States. And I think of those 22,000 schools, not even 2,000 were recognized in the gold, silver or bronze category. There were a total of 1,750 that even made the bar. I think that what was really interesting to me is that what they were looking for in America's best high schools, it was based on the key principle that a great high school must serve all of its students well, not just those who are college-bound, and that it must be able to produce measurable academic outcomes to show the school is successfully educating its student body across a range of performance indicators. So the first two standards that all of the schools needed to pass, the first one was the schools had to perform better overall than statistically expected on the kneecaps. So they looked at all of the students and figured out, based on what your student body looks like, where do we expect you to finish? And you had to beat that. And Portsmouth did that. Step two was to select schools whose disadvantaged students performed better than the statewide average. And Portsmouth did that. And that's how we got to be a bronze. I think examining where we didn't make it to the silver or gold was select schools that perform best at producing college-level achievement. And that's the breadth of access to AP and IB courses and the depth of access, making sure that more and more students are taking that and growing that. And I think that, that's one area that maybe we wanna look at some measures around. And I do think that grant that you talked about last time is looking at that. So I think the work is there for that. So that's one kind of area of, you know, kind of looking at those measures and looking at how they, you know, fit into Portsmouth a little bit more and can we maintain that given the cuts in services that we have? Or are we gonna have trouble maintaining that? Or were we able to protect that are questions that are, in my mind. And then I guess, I'd also like to look at the, try to find a way to measure the community's level of commitment to education because I think it's very misinformative when people use the cost per pupil as a level of a community's or taxpayer commitment to the kids, you know, to the schools. The New Hampshire Department of Education and the definition of cost per pupil says it is based on expenditures from all revenue sources, local, state and federal, and is therefore not an indication of the cost to the taxpayers of the district. So when we get a grant, like we're talking about, or the $150,000 technology grant at the middle school, those things up our cost per pupil, but it has nothing to do with the taxpayers. So somehow, we either need to flesh out what is the, you know, taxpayer portion of that and we've done that before and it didn't seem to help, or, and I've tried to, I've tried to do this and I need a little bit more help with it, is look at, you know, if you look at tax rates, well, we're pretty low, we're below average for Rockingham County and below average for New Hampshire and below average on a national level. But those things have a lot of variables, so it's very, you know, it's difficult, that's a difficult number to compare. But if you compare for each community, whether it's apples or oranges or watermelons, which, if you look at your tax rate and look at how much of your tax rate goes toward your schools, you know, I kind of started to do that and we're very average, if not below average. So maybe there's some way of, at least being able to articulate that we are efficient, that we do think out of the box, that we are creative, or not, you know, just, but to find that measure where we truly can compare ourselves to other communities. Because we can't just keep doing better and keep doing more with less. We need to know how well, how much more are we doing with how much less? That's it.
Tom?
It's like a pot on the stove starting to boil, trying to figure out exactly, you know, which one to pull out. I think one of the things that I think has a, is a missed opportunity is really taking a look at the fact that when we look at every aspect of the budget, whether it's, you know, curriculum, whether it's cost cutting, you know, we've never really spent a tremendous amount of time around, you know, when we talk about budget is, what are the things we actually want to improve? And, you know, that can go all the way down to the granular level of assigning each program, whether it's math, you know, whether it's building, whether it's energy, to say, you know, we want to build a track, you know, for each component that's going to, we have an expectation of improvement, to be able to then try to measure it. And knowing full well that, you know, we're in a cycle where we're talking about removing money from our budget, slimming things down, but, you know, having the conversation around how do we improve things also opens up the discussion about how to do it differently. And I think there's a great opportunity to sit there and make sure that that is part of the conversation because as much as we are trying to find efficiencies, as much as we wanna sit there and do some benchmarking because I think that's gonna be very critical and people are gonna be doing their homework and we need to be able to say, you know, this is best practice, you know, and we can substantiate it. But to build a track to say that, you know what, maybe we are doing a good job, but we wanna do a better job. And by having that level of focus, it will force us to evaluate how we do things, which could draw out, you know, some cost out of the structure, but also having a mindful eye to say that our job is to improve education. And through that lens, it can also lead to finding better ways to do things at a lower cost, potentially.
Ken?
Washington, not to go into in-depth, but, you know, looking back and looking forward on missed opportunities, I've got three things I'll bring up. One is, and I will refer tonight to the misled Portsmouth Herald editorial that was in last week. They said, "Really didn't affect anybody. I'd like you to introduce you to 34 students that will not be taken in electrical class because we made a decision, you know, to cut that class." Thirty-four students will not have that opportunity. Now, I ask, if we had cut a class, and that 34, by the way, is two sessions, 17 in one half of the year and 17 in the other half of the year. I'll ask that, if we had done that to the most advanced language class, which only has 11 students in it, or the most advanced math class that has 16 students in it, where would the outcry be? I think we lost for students this year. And I think we've gotta watch that because I'd love to know what the Portsmouth Herald's gonna do in eight years when they find that it's very hard to find an electrician to come and fix, you know, some type of component. And I think you gotta, you know, we have to balance that what we have for that of higher educational needs is also balanced to the high number of students. Nobody came and talked for those students. Unfortunately, since that's happened, I have heard from three or four that actually had signed up for classes because it wasn't the cast course catalog, obviously it hadn't been cut yet. And now that opportunity is now gone, that they, we lost it for the students. So when I hear whether it be from anybody that, you know, the Portsmouth school system got away kind of unscathed because we did go up the 1.8, a lot of that was fixed costs that we really know that we kept starting to cut. And again, there were other areas to them, just giving those 34 students the light of day because somehow, I think we kinda blew it on that. I think we do need to look, I think Linda's absolutely right, you look at the full view. I know I don't make it in the schools. I thought when I went into business for myself, I had more time to go, but it doesn't always quite happen. But I do try to make a good appearance in getting in and trying to get a flavor of what's going in. And we did. We just increased our class size pretty much across the board to, from that 17 to that 20. And when I did travel for FedEx, I used to stop in at schools. And I can tell you the anarchy that happens when you get above 26 to 32 students in high inner-city-type schools. Little education is done. And, you know, I think when we do get into in-depth, we've gotta put a lot of things on the table. I don't think it's sacred, if we keep going in this path of going negative much longer, do you think about combining another elementary school? And don't think we haven't done it. In the last 20 years, we closed four in the city of Portsmouth. So it does happen. And I think that's something that we've gotta warn the public, that does happen. Where I also think we need to reach out and make sure something happens, and I'm just gonna call it the Joint Budget Committee, the JVC that we used to have. We need to do something because it's absolutely right, we don't even know when we sit down in January, let alone when we make our first vote in February, before February 15th, we don't know whether this is gonna stick to the wall or not. In fact, it's a fallacy to even really vote on the budget because we end up voting on it again at least one more time, if not two more times. And that's not fair. That's not fair to the employees that we have as teachers and it's not fair to the students, such as the example of the electrical classes, because what we will keep doing is chipping away and without that. I feel if we keep trying to meet once every two months to get a good budget foundation done to pass and work with the administration, and we work with our colleagues on the Police and Fire Commission and have some dialogue with them, we can force the city council to put, I don't care whether you call it a JVC, you call it a pre-budget grouping or whatever you call it, to sit with two representatives and whoever from the city hall side, Steve and Ed and two representatives from the school board or whatever the other councils, commissions have, sometime in November and sometime in December have two or three meetings so we have an idea before we walk in the door in January. Because all we're doing is throwing darts at a dartboard, thinking we have an idea where we may be. We can sit here right now and think, I mean, we could play three scenarios out, you know, negative five, zero, plus two. And I think that's what we'll end up doing. And it's kind of a fruitless exercise and quite honestly, a waste of our good efforts to do that. So, those were the things. And going back to Lisa's point, that making that top 1 percent of the schools that the research had done out of U.S. News, I'd read that article. And what the scary thing is, is that, yeah, we have our double A bonding and everything is, when will we fall off of that because we can't maintain it because of the class size or whatever? I think we're close. I think we're very close. We can look at the things we didn't get for the gold or silver, but look at what we could lose to be off of even being, you know, recognized. And that does affect your real estate values, it, you know, reflects your community. So, I just say to Lisa, we gotta look at the other side. How close are we to falling off the recognition side? Thank you.
Thanks. Mitch?
Steven, can you reread the question for me?
Sure.
In looking towards the future, what is one area you think will require more information to inform decisions?
Got it.
Or one question that you believe needs to be answered better?
Okay. So this is something that I would like to know, understand more about. And that is, I would love to have the administration explain to me how block scheduling really works and how that can be, well, A, how things are really scheduled. I mean, I don't understand it. We're going now eighth university and I don't understand that either. And then, you know, and then some other models of modified block scheduling, what that looks like. Because that's really something throughout this whole budget process that I've had an interest in. So that's what I'd like to know more about.
Thanks. Anne?
I mentioned before the new way of delivering technology and integration. I would really like to... I would really like to have a whole diagram of how that's going to work. I've heard several different things. I think it's a more creative approach. I don't know that it's one that's necessarily going to save money. Hopefully, it will be more effective. But I would really like to, I'd really like to see almost like a blueprint of who are the people and how are they going to interact, and what's their job description. So I have a lot of questions in that regard.
Carol?
The question that I think we could answer better is, how do we educate the public about what we're doing, talking about cost per pupil? We can have a conversation about it here, but if the public doesn't understand, the public is going to look at cost per pupil a certain way, unless we educate them differently. And I think we need to educate on the cost per pupil. I think we need to educate on class size, which is a component of what really is going on with children today in the classroom, like Linda's talking about. I think we should all go to the classrooms and try to see what's going on. But we need to educate JQ, public, taxpayer, as to what it's like to be a nine-year-old in an elementary school in Portsmouth today, not 50 years ago, but today. And I think we're losing that battle. We are not winning that by any stretch. There's a huge segment of our population out there of retired folks who just don't get it. They don't understand why we need so much money, and why, and they think we're not doing as well as was done when they were kids. And maybe they're right, maybe they're wrong, I don't know, but I don't think we're winning right now. And I think we have to get ahead of the newspaper. I think Tom has talked about that a few times, about just getting ahead, so that we're not just reacting to, you know, the Herald printing an editorial, framing the conversation. And that last editorial framed the question in such a way that just basically says that we, you know, are asking for too much money. And, you know, that we're, you know, it's just framing the question all the time, making it as if we're just spending too much money and using too much money. And I think we have to somehow come up with some kind of media plan on how we are going to get the story. And like I said, I think we've done a really good job of not overstating things. And I think with Ed's leadership in that regard, we can take a very positive tone to our media campaign. We don't have to come out swinging axes. We can just come out very matter-of-factly, but lay the facts out for the community, so that they can actually see what this cost per pupil really means, and how little we really are spending in Portsmouth. And so that's the one question that I would like to have answered better.
Thank you. Anne, Rebecca?
Okay, I have two. But one is along those lines, a question answered to the community is how has education changed over the years, because it's no longer appropriate to have 35 kids in a row being talked at by teachers? You know, the philosophy is different, the end product is different, what we're teaching and the kind of adults we're creating are different than the kind of adults we were creating 20 years ago. But for me, I think the question that I need is, I need to know the value of what we're giving, and the monetary value, the educational value, and it goes sort of back to the cost per pupil, and sort of supporting what we provide and why we provide it. You know, is it appropriate to spend X amount of money on this particular program? Well, it might be, you know, and we always say we don't want to cut things because of the numbers, but, I mean, this is the budget, it is all about numbers. But if we can then have the supporting documentation behind it, well, it's important to spend this money, because look at what we get out of it. You know, we know if we spend money on early intervention, we're going to end up saving financially by the time the student reaches high school. And so I think, for me, I want to know by grade and by department at the high school, what is it that we're spending monetarily? But along with that information, I need to know why. Like, is this something, you know, that other districts are teaching? Is this a new, important thing? Like, is technology really important in here to stay? Yes, it is. That's why we're putting money. And I think if we have, why is this important? Then we can figure out and prioritize and figure out how we're going to fund what we think is important. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Just saying, yes.
Thanks.
Great. Well, thank you.
All right. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay.
Juice is running over.
Juice is all sapped out. Okay.
Juice is running over.
So, well, I thank you for that. I think that was important for us to hear, particularly the second set of, you know, second questions, you know, as we try to do some planning. So what I'd like to do is maybe share with you some of the preliminary work we've done thinking about next year with the administrative team, and then maybe work our way into a conversation about what you'd like us to do. You know, when we asked that question, what questions need to be answered, you know, we heard in January and February, or we heard after the budget, we don't want to be in the same place. So there are certain things as a board, you want us to tackle and answer and deliberate on and come back to you, whether it be the block scheduling and set that up. And we're about planning a calendar for the year, next year, and setting goals. So I thought we'd start with the most important thing, which is a fundamental mission to educate all students. And so what I did for you in this little block, and I'll walk you through it a little bit, is I took snippets of last year's goals in that first box, which was, you know, to support the PLC implementation, to build a pyramid, to put PD about using data to inform instructional practice, and then our initial conversation as an administrative team for next year, and what we're thinking about. And clearly, you know, as we dipped our toe to see if we could cohere as a district around goal-setting, we're upping the ante a little bit, and I think administratively, we're all in agreement, that we want to set a math and a literacy goal at all the schools. Not, you know, initially, we just picked one, and that was fine, and that was good, and I think we were well-served by it. But now we'd like to see that happen, and keep the focus on learner outcomes. And then we're talking about all buildings kind of creating those interventions, getting the scale, because we're, quite honestly, we're not there at each of the buildings. And that we also publish it to parents, and we start making some determination about what interventions are actually effective, what works, and what maybe could go by the wayside. We've heard much about implementing the K-5 computer integration, so we're going to work on that model, and we feel it's important to come back to you and tell you how that's working and how we're moving along with that, as well as the middle school's 21st century classroom discussion. And then in bold, what we talked about, and I would open this up to conversation for you as well, is when you did your list, the administrators brainstormed the list, and you looked at it a couple of times. There was a lot of talk about online courses beyond the core, which is to say, you know, that's a skill, more and more of our students are going to have this as a requirement down the road. Is there a policy avenue to maybe have students, before they graduate, take a, one or two, online courses that is not part of their core curriculum, but is elective in nature, that they could take? And then our work with this grant, and we'll know more whether we're funded in October, is to look at some kind of early college and expand dual enrollment opportunities for students. If we're going to, you know, demystify college for all and give them opportunities, we have to kind of make that bridge. So that's the educational component, and we don't see that initial goal changing much. That's the fundamental mission of the district. But it's in the second box that would kind of be tonight's conversation, at least the way I see it, because we're going to continue to improve our systems and structures. We want to be more efficient and more effective in what we do. And a year ago, we talked about developing a supervision and evaluation system with doing annual appraisals. Well, we've worked through that process now, and now we're ready to implement it. We'll implement an appraisal system where every teacher is evaluated January, February, March, in line, in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement. So that'll be, it'll be an implementation year for us. Additionally, we want to sustain the three-minute walkthroughs that we've started with, and we piloted. We had good feedback by the administrative team. And so we're also going to talk about using technology for that, and actually through, it's kind of fortuitous, I guess, we, as part of the grant, we learned about an I-walkthrough model, where you can collect a lot of data about either Marzano's strategies around cognitive demand in the classroom, and you can begin to get a data picture of each of the schools, and what's going on as principals go through this process. So we're interested in moving forward with that next year. The facilities assessment, the funding is there in the CIP to do that, and so we need to go forward with that. There needs to be a key piece with the K-5 schools. And then everything else in bold is what I have heard from you, is I tried to collapse lists. I don't mean to do your work for you, but, and I'm not suggesting we do them all, but perhaps we need to do them all, but maybe there's short-term goals, and then there's FY12 and beyond. In other words, what do you want to get done this year, and what do we need to be thinking about, you know, long-term, so to speak? So what I, one of the things we have committed to already, I will tell you, we, as an administrative team, have formulated a SMART goal, where we are committed to reducing our substitute line by 10%. You may remember a year ago, you cut it in budget from like 380 to 360. And through a lot of circumstances, there are a lot of reasons why the substitute line goes up, but we're just under a half a million dollars. And so we're going to do a much better job this year, I think administratively, and we've said, we've said, we've reached an agreement, we're going to monitor personal leave, we're going to be careful about professional leave. The union, we've had conversations with Linder and Janet, et cetera, will write a letter in the fall, and we're going to work to kind of monitor that in a better way, and we think we can do that. So that's one goal. You've talked about, if you went back and looked at your list, there were three different bullets around looking administratively, and doing some kind of organizational review, and looking at, you know, basically task analysis, who does what, and are we as efficient as we can be? And to Dexter's point, how do we align with other peer groups? Are we too, are we administratively heavy? Are we just right? Are we understaffed, et cetera? There was much about food service, whether to go through that process of looking at outsourcing. We have a wellness group that's underway and making some suggestions and doing some work there. There was a lot of talk about a development director, i.e. a grant writer, who might be able to, you know, that might be an investment that could make a return to the district. And then I've also heard along the way, sped audit and a technology audit. Looking out beyond those, that initial year, next year, so what I'd like to be able to do is come back to you in late July, early August, and formulate these as goals for you to review. The Citywide Efficiencies Committee, that's going to do its work, but there's also another bullet, I'm thinking, well beyond, because you won't negotiate contracts till two years from now, but there's a notion that the association will participate on some city-wide committee to explore health insurance options. And I think it goes without saying, if you read any of the surrounding communities and our own, that health insurance is a serious demand on our budget. So that's actually written into the teacher contract, and I think that's something that's fruitful, maybe not right away, but long-term. There's also been talk about buildings and fields and rentals, and there's been talk on the, and maybe this comes out of a sped audit, but staffing levels, are we well-staffed? Are we understaffed? Where are we in terms of our special education? There's conversations about bringing students back in district versus out, you know, some kind of third party who could come in and can do that analysis and be able to answer the question. It's all about whether the porridge is too hot, too cold, or just right. I mean, that's really where we're at, I think, in many of these instances. And so that was just my effort at trying to capture what you had said. I might have omitted some things, and I heard some comments here in the last round that we can work on, but block scheduling comes to mind, and the technology, I think, Anne, we've already, and how do we outreach to the community? Those are key goals, but that might be the communications goal. And then I've been so bold with Mr. Zadravich's permission to think that we need a fourth block here, right? Because at the end of the day, it isn't just about saving money, it's about where are we headed as a district, and what's our vision here? What's our mission? And so I think the four bullets that I put under the '09-'10 school year, I think, are really what we're about. Finding common time for teachers to work, to learn new curriculum and strategies to be effective. Finding individualized attention for students to make sure everyone meets, you know, those learning needs. You know, we're looking for more academic time for those struggling learners, those learners who need it. And then we're talking about professional development in a new way, expert support, i.e. coaches, and professional development at the point of practice in the classroom. And so thinking about 10 and 11, it might be wise to talk about a study with staff utilization, and which is to say, we're thinking about how can we reallocate the current resource to deliver on that mission? Stagger days, stagger the year? You know, is there a way to use staff from eight to three, and then maybe 10 to five, so that you have a fifth block, if you will, for those students who need it? Because just cramming everything into six and a half hours just isn't going to work. And you're going to have conflict all the time between those other things we believe in. We've talked a little bit about the grant. Portsmouth High School is already going to go through a NEASC accreditation, they're doing their self-study next year, and that's labor-intensive on the part of staff. They have to do probably a 10-page analysis against seven different standards. So the faculty's divided up, they've got to go about their work, and they present that to the visiting committee. So that'll be a healthy process, I think, to reexamine what they're doing. And then this grant piece, you know, we're pursuing that. Steve and I went up, Mr. Collins was in Disney World last week, so we got to go, and that was fun. He's back happily, and he'll go next week, but that process is moving forward, which is to find common planning time for teachers. So, you know, we're looking for, how to find more learning time for students, how to find common planning time for teachers. And then something else we need to, we're going to start this year, and hopefully we can grow, is our jumpstart program in K to 8. Each of the principals has gone back and identified those learners who, by virtue of the kneecap, might be in the lowest three deciles. And they've been invited to come to work on learning those standards. So it's not a traditional summer school, you didn't turn your homework in, you got a failure for other reasons. It's about students we know are close to meeting standard but need more time. And so we've got that off the ground. The middle school actually has a wonderful one, with the two weeks at the end of July and two weeks at the beginning of August for two different groups of children. It'll all be done at the community campus, and then they'll be part of the New Heights program, so that's kind of the carrot that gets them to come for the full day. It's very nice. I mean, John's done a wonderful job with that, so that's our thinking here, but I'll turn it over to you folks just to, oh, and the other thing I wanted to just share with you, because this, I need to tell you, this has not been vetted by Mr. Bartlett. All right? This is a...
Does he even know that you're presenting this?
I was out this morning, so I didn't get a chance. I had intended to share it with him. Who's the superintendent?
It says, it's a preliminary.
All right. So, so I knew folks might want to know this, and I'll share it. So if you take the 10 salary line, you take the 11 budget salary line, I made the adjustments myself. That's why those strike-throughs are, those are the $259,000 adjusted. So there may be some modifications here or there. And then if you just take my assumptions moving forward to next year, you can see the budget will be up just about $2 million. If it's a status quo budget, same staff, same drill, all these assumptions are clear on the column line, it's a $2 million increase. So that's what you're, that's what you're looking at. And I just wanted to share you the easiest snapshot I had around time. I have, we got a lot of literature about this, and I'll feed it to you over time, but why expanded school time is necessary, and how things have changed, pre-NCLB, post-NCLB. And what's really fascinating is, you know, well, I'll let you make your...
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's a lot of information.
Did you say you wanted feedback on this, or not? Sure. Yes, I do, because I'd like to go away.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I think, I mean, short of what we just had, the rest, there is no process from here to the end of the meeting, sort of established, so let's have a conversation. I'll have a conversation to start. I think, in my mind, it's important, I mean, this is terrific, beginning to look out more than, more than one cycle. I think as we describe these things, though, and thinking about what Lisa talked about as far as getting to the next, the silver standard for the newsweek, I think it's important when we describe some of these initiatives, like the staggered days, expanded learning time. I mean, that goes both for students that are struggling, as well as students, in fact, that are high performers. And it will give us an opportunity to actually address both. And so I think, as we describe each of these initiatives, I think it's really important that we don't focus just on those students that are falling behind, but also make certain that we're, for the highest achievers, that we're also creating opportunities, whether it's additional AP, or, again, some of the things that Lisa pointed out in the newsweek. address both. And so, I think, as we describe each of these initiatives, I think it's really important that we don't focus just on those students that are falling behind, but also make certain that we're, for the, for the highest achievers, that we're also creating opportunities, whether it's additional AP, or again, some of the things that Lisa pointed out in the Newsweek assessment framework. So, that's my initial reaction, but, but this is, it's, 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 again, a nice framework to have a discussion with, so for that, I appreciate it.
Yes. Others? Dexter.
Oh, no, if people weren't going to go. So, so, I would, I would vote strongly, and I think we, I think the technology committee is, has it in their budget, maybe not. I do believe the technology audit is absolutely critical that we do this year. So, so if, if we're voting in that, in that square of what's most important, in my mind, that answers some of the questions that, the question that Ann had, and the question that several of us have had for a while, is really understanding what our technology, where we're at and where we need to go. And I know the committee is targeting that.
Okay. Yes, Tom?
Yeah, on the community relations, I think, you know, there's some things that we could take a look at from our own website, and I know we've talked about it, but to me, there's, there's a huge opportunity to really, you know, retool that, take it back, you know, really develop it into a way that we can, you know, whether there's a superintendent's blog, whether there's active, you know, pages that we can post on a regular basis, but try to make it a little bit more interactive, whether there's some way that we can actually set up some information sharing so that, you know, parents can actually have access to different pieces of information that, you know, maybe, you know, we're trying to drive activity around getting people to use a resource that is going to give them information, so knowing full well that, you know, people get more electronic, you know, maybe there's, you know, I know we have emails, but trying to take a look at that whole electronic media of trying to figure out how we convey information, and knowing full well that we're also driving people to a spot where they know they can get answers, or post questions, or find a way to, you know, have different levels of dialogue.
Lisa.
One concrete thought I had was, um.
As opposed to your normal thoughts?
Yes. I thought one thing that really worked well during our communication with parents was the elementary meeting where we had all three elementary schools on the same night, and then, I think that we were at a little bit of a disadvantage with some of the other schools. We did, I think, the elementary one night, and then, the middle school, and then, the high school, all on different nights, and we were at different points in the process going through, so I wonder how it would work if we did all schools sort of at one point in the process, and perhaps at another point in the process, so that everybody's together. And I think that would help inform the public even better, because it, you know, it helps to broaden their perspective on the budget as well.
Kent.
Yeah, I'll be the one. Because I'm sure that's what's going to make more headlines tomorrow, is that, you know, I don't think I've ever heard, prior to even maybe December or November, knowing a, a kind of a thumbnail sketch of what the budget would be next year, and I know that, you know, this is very, very preliminary.
It's my work, Kent.
Were you a math teacher?
But I, I think it's, it's an important number that you gave us, that, again, now gives us 12 months to work with, versus having to, again, not know that number, even on the, just the school board number, not knowing what the city may be doing. But to sit here and be able to have a number that is just under $2 million over what we just passed, knowing the struggles that we had, and it gets to our, our discussion prior to this, is that we have to be the salesperson for it. We need to now know, in the next three months, what that $2 million actually means, you know? You know, we, we can look at this very fast, and actually, I saw our deduction, and the transportation goes down, that's, you know, not much, but.
Well, the assumption I made on all other, other operating is level fund at all those lines.
Right. And again, you're either, you know, right on, or you're under. I mean.
Exactly.
You're not going to be over.
Conservative.
Yeah, well, no, I think all he did was take and just do it. I think the factor of being higher is a greater possibility, because we don't know the insurance increases for sure, and again, these were assumptions made. But to be able to start and have a 12-month period of knowing that, just, just for easibility, I'll say, it's a $2 million increase next year. What does that mean? How do we work with that? What do we hear for an outcry from the community in the next, you know, between now and the start of school? Because as school starts, I hope, but we have another major work session where we really now get to the in-depth discussion. I know that, you know, we're trying to stay away from that, but I think we need to put things on the table. For example, the school system, I just heard yesterday from my daughter in Indianapolis, and I know this is contractual, just said that if we're going to have athletics, all coaching positions become volunteer-type situation. Oddly enough, Indianapolis, I looked at their budget real quickly, and our budget, almost the same for coaching. It was about $100,000 difference. I was very surprised, and if you look at ours, just call it about a half a million dollars worth of athletic stipends and so forth, that have to be paid out along with everything. Athletic budget-wise, I should say, that's not just the coaches. But again, $2 million, what did we get? I got a, how much were we cut this year? What was that, how much was our increase this year?
Well, you went up just under $700,000 on the final.
Right, $700,000. That means that we're more than a million, two, million, three, basically, you know, even off before we even opened doors. So, again, as much as I really appreciate the in-depth, you know, the blocks that you gave us, because now, we take those, those numbers, the, and we can start to say, here's the efficiencies of where we can start to look at lowering the cost. You take that number, and in the next two to three months, before we do another work session, we go ahead and we start to apply our thoughts to, okay, and maybe ask you the questions. If we do, administration, how much does that really save us? Again, putting the number you gave us with the blocks that you gave, you started off with, we now can come back and ask you intelligently, what amount of money do we really save by doing this? Do we save, or do we, and what's, I think, to me, that's very important, is what is the student effect? How badly do we hurt a student?
Right, so, so that's, that's where we want to push you a little bit. When Steve asked the question, you know, what question do you want to know more about so that you're not, next February, going, you know, and this comes up annual, and we don't have the question answered? What, you know, I'll give you the example. The PEEP thing came up incessantly this year. We heard it, and heard it, and heard it. Well, you went out and visited the, the facility, and you got some sense that, you know, the investment early on reaps large dividends in terms of mitigating out-of-district placements, they're with their typical peers, it's a one-stop shopping, it's a model for the state. Now, one would hope that that's not a question you need answered next year, that as a board with conviction, you can say, no, that model, that's short money, that reaps a long-term investment. And so, Ed, don't go waste your time getting Steve and Steve and company to go do this. I'm looking, I want you to tell us, what items do you want us to go get the data? And we'll do the per pupil stuff. I mean, those stuff, that's pot and parcel what we do, so that's not an add-on at all. But what are the real questions you see will come up again next year that you want to have addressed? First, I know you all have your individual needs and wants and, you know, ideas, but what collectively, as a board, do you want to have us head out and go do? And so, I tried to put some of them down, they may or may not be worthwhile. For example, food service, that's an efficiency, that could result in a better quality program for, for students in terms of food. You don't have it in your general budget, so as a cost-saving measure, that's not going to yield any savings. Make generate a little bit of revenue, I don't know, but we can look at that if you wish, because that's fine. But it's, it's finite time and resource, you know?
So.
If I, you know, so, as we have other ideas, I mean, is there a suggestion that we just start pulling them, start firing them down in email? You know, you'll, you'll be sort of the collector, you know, you'll create a repository, and we'll, we'll start a list. I mean, because there's a ton of ideas that we all have, and without expending the time right now, you know, we can articulate them a little bit better, you know, put them down, send them. You'll collect them.
And then, we'll talk about them.
And we'll talk about them.
Right. Because I'd hate, I'd hate to see the excess amount of work. I wouldn't ask them to do the work until we've had the conversation.
Right.
Okay.
That's my.
Very good, yes.
Just one of the things that you've brought up, the Jump Start people, or Boot Camp as Little Harper's going to be calling it, it'd be interesting to me, interesting to me, myself, but I'd love for you to look at it, to see where the kids are that have been selected to go to boot camp, and if, in fact, that two weeks pays off by October, you know, we're doing it first two weeks of August, so get the data from that, see if the focus is math, which is mine, does it make, does it give them a boost? Has it caused the effect that you want it to have? Might not be with everybody, but you might get enough of a bump out of some that it was effective, so I'd be really telling those people that you want that data.
That's great.
That's a great one, Linda.
It's not going to hurt.
Right.
No, but I think rather than, so rather than put money to something that doesn't get what you want it to get, so find out, look at the data, and then, figure out if you're going to do it again next year, or do it a little differently.
Right.
So, so I would say, looking at the, looking at this chart, this rubric almost of 20, of 2010-11, the ones that are not bold, the ones that are just regular text, like literacy goals, I mean, I'm really, have to say, I'm impressed by the continued focus on the education piece, on the, on the teaching and the learning. And I think the other thing is the, the focus on professional development for teachers particularly. I think the more time for learning for students and the more common planning time for teachers, those are two great goals with a focus on math and literacy. The thing I think, the things I think I would like to ask, you know, if I were to vote on these as well, one is, I'd be curious about the online courses beyond the core, you know, at the high school level, I think. Because I know that one of the things that has come up in the past is the idea of, that may be one sort of efficient way to offer students access to courses we couldn't actually cover, because we can't afford to hire a teacher, you know? So, that's one thing I would really explore. I can speak from the college and university level, that more and more students are taking online courses as part of their regular day schedule now. So, it's not just face-to-face, and it's not just online at night and distant students, but on Tuesday morning, I don't feel like coming to class, and I can take it online, and like, the whole course is offered online. So, I think it's important for high school students to have that experience. And I think if online courses are taught correctly, they're, they're actually way more rigorous in many ways than face-to-face, especially from the writing perspective. You really have to write a lot.
But how do you know which ones, you know, how do you know?
You don't. So, I think, right. So, I think that's one thing. I think being creative, the whole notion that you're even suggesting here of staggered time, I think, you know, that is, that's a, that's a fabulous way to think about it. I had, you know, when I went to high school, we had staggered time, we called it triple session, you know? But I think this, this, this could really work, you know, especially another fifth block, and if you can target those students, you know, I don't, these aren't necessarily things that save money, but these are things that really, I think, could move the education up to the next level. But the one thing, I guess the one thing I would suggest that I'd like to see information on are the, are the peer comparisons, the administrative organization review, how do we compare with other districts around the state? Because I don't believe we're over, we're top-heavy by any means of these imaginations, and I'd like to see those numbers. And I think any other kind of comparison about how we're doing in relation to our peers. We haven't actually defined the peer group. I know that people think, they look at Portsmouth, and they say, oh, well, compare it to Dover and Oyster River. But I think, you know, getting back to, like, Linda, you had, I mean.
Lisa.
Lisa, sorry. You, your little point in there about the cost per pupil, so there was a, there was an actual definition that the state used as to how this data should be used. Well, I remember when I was looking at comparing, comparing districts, there are other rules, quote-unquote informal rules, that the state says, when you're comparing districts, you shouldn't compare a district that has K through 12 to another district that only offers K through 8, regardless of how close they might live to you. You should not, that's not a peer. So, I think, you know, there is a core peer set. We have 25, 2,600 students in our district, so if you looked at all the districts in the state that have between 2 and 3,000 students that offered K through 12, you know, then you're actually talking about a peer group, you know? And I think we need to begin to get a better handle on who our peers are, because Dover's not a peer, because they're twice as big as we are district-wise, you know, student-wise? I think, I think they have over 4,000 students in their district. So, I think that would be able to be helpful, and I'd like, those comparative numbers would be really good. And you started that a little bit with the metrics.
We tried last year a little bit, and we looked at similar.
Right.
And we just need to.
Right.
I think, I think this, we need to keep on refining.
Exactly, exactly.
And also, just down to, you know, maybe selecting some specific areas.
Yeah, and the other thing I was going to say is, is not just a peer group, but you also may, you also may want to also include best-of-class.
Right.
And so, and so, you're spot-on. There, in fact, there is a relatively small number of districts that look like us in New Hampshire, for the reasons you say. Fundamentally, it's, it's the similar program K through 12 in size.
Yeah, and then, you could look at social economics.
And then, you also then may want to add in that perceived best-of-class, and I don't know what that means.
Bronze and silver, or whatever, however you want to refine.
Yeah, exactly. Because that's still sort of, from an educational perspective, maybe, that's still sort of the goal that we should be driving to, regardless of what our peers in New Hampshire might look like.
I watch, though, when we say peers in New Hampshire, I, I, there's only 13 miles of Seacoast, so, you know, I would like to know, when we look at this, and I know there are different formats, so, different, each state does it differently, so you have to sort of take a little bit different view of it, but Newbury Port is a very similar type of, you know, school-type setup. And, and again, I'm not just saying leave anything out of New Hampshire, I mean, you want to use that, but you need to look at it regionally and economically comparison, because there isn't another district like Portsmouth within the state of New Hampshire, because if you look at our social economics, you know, it's a real tough one, and then, you go to somewhere that might be similar, like Lebanon, is similar? Well, guess what? You know, it's not similar in that it has Dartmouth, and it has outreaches with programs like that, plus, they also take in some Vermont students at times, so, and, you know, who knows what we do? But again, I always watch when we just say, you know, look just towards New Hampshire. I think, I think you broaden it, even including, which is more similar to us, is Connecticut is a more similar type of financing from the state and so forth, not exactly because they get more money from their state than we do.
I think the regional ideas.
Yeah, it's more regional.
And I think the, the linking, you know, results, net results, you know, to, you know, money in different categories, so that maybe, you know, it's not just a matter of saying.
So, that's what you were saying, looking at specific.
Yeah, just looking at specifics, so that, you know, you're not sitting there going, we're spending less, they're spending more, but it's more to say, you know.
How's that break out?
What does it break out? So, if we can identify, and maybe part of the goal here is, you know, when we take a look at this peer group, that we, you know, coalesce it down to say, here are three sister schools that we are going to now track, and we're going to track this year, next year, and we're going to continue to trend it, so that we're not just going out and picking arbitrary schools to meet our specific needs, but we want to build a trend that can show a three-year pattern, and then, we can tweak it slowly, but you kind of want to build a fixed model.
Yeah.
Good?
Yes, Karen.
I think all of this discussion regarding, regarding data and measuring our success is really important, and we should do that, but I think sometimes I get nervous that we may be forgetting that these are children, and they're already being tested quite a lot, and some might say they're being tested too much, as it is. And I think we have to be careful in our zeal to measure everything, that we don't over-test and overburden these little children.
Yeah, I don't think we weren't, I don't think that the conversation, as I saw it, was talking about testing kids, it was just collecting.
No, but, but you have to get that data.
A lot of data. Well, no, it already exists, data for the districts, what they're already doing.
But we would presumably continue to gather the data, we wouldn't just stop arbitrarily, and we have to somehow, and all of the PLCs and all that work we're doing, I think it's good, I support it, but it is assessing kids more. And, and it, there's a lot of studies out there to say that kids are being tested too much right now.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's true from, you know, from a standardized point of view, I think one of the things, at least. think one of the things, at least, you know, in the time that I've been on the board in Portsmouth, people in the community may actually point to those standardized test scores and use those to make certain arguments one way or the other, but on the board, I think we've always talked about multiple levels of assessment, not meaning testing, but where teachers look at students, student actual work, and creating portfolios of work, and, you know, so it's not just sitting down and testing kids, it's a broader assessment.
Yeah, and I think, um, just to speak to that as a former teacher, I, I, I think that the way the, the PLC assessments are more formative, and that is something that teachers are constantly and always doing, they're, you know, checking their homework, seeing where they are, checking what their class discussion was. So I don't think, I wouldn't think of that as being an additional assessment. I think the way that data is being gathered and shared and coordinated among the teams of teachers and the schools, you know, that's the piece of it that's different. But as far as how a teacher's interacting with a child, I don't feel that that's an additional assessment, like the kneecaps in grade three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and 11, that's an assessment.
Right.
Um, where we used to kind of do that maybe every other year, I forget, it was in three grades instead of so many grades, and so, you know, so I agree with you on that PLC piece, so I think that's, that's more formative, and that's more, it's, it's the data collection and analysis, I think that's the different piece of that.
And if I...
Sorry. Well, go ahead.
If I was just, I was just going to say to that, too, I don't think assessment's a bad word. I think it's, when you're talking about the formative daily, weekly assessment that teachers and students do all the time, that's feedback. That's the kind of assessment you want happening on a regular basis, as opposed to the testing.
It's going somewhere else.
Which, which is, there's never feedback from that, those standardized tests.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think you know that.
Both with, both with my own students and with kids I talk to now, they do not really feel they're being tested, 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 when they, when they're talking about the informal kinds of things, uh, they look at their progress, and they take a look at what they used to be able to do and what they can do now, and they, they basically track their growth, and they see this as a positive. And as a person who also does the NAEP assessments, which is an assessment that the federal government, hands down, it is unfortunate, because the kids really don't get a chance to know how they did. We just get a general overall, you know, the district did well. But the kids really don't mind.
Sorry. Um, yes. Lisa.
Um, one thing we haven't talked about, measuring or monitoring, um, are the impact of the cuts we've made this year, um, because while it is true that on a dollar-for-dollar basis, we're getting more money than last year, the cost of delivering education actually increased significantly, and we are cutting our fixed costs, or however you want to think about it, by, I have 1.7 million dollars from, you know, I think the initial budget that was presented was a 7.2 percent increase, which was level services plus some amount as an investment in technology, which we all agreed was something that we needed to do.
Right.
We're down to a 1.8 percent increase over last year, which means there was a cut from services, that investment didn't happen.
So monitor it.
And when we cut that, we cut seventeen positions, you know, Kent talked a little bit about the electronics course that we cut, um, class size is increasing across the board, um, adult ed, we cut all of the general fund support for adult ed, which as a community, we might need to look at that and make sure that we're able to continue that. Um, I spoke with the director of that, and she said that a lot of the, they, they've repositioned themselves over the past couple of years to really help people work on resumes and find jobs and interviewing skills, um, so whether that comes from the school department, and a lot of communities, uh, support that through their rec department or through some other department, but, you know, let's be mindful of the pieces of money and the support that we took out, um, and I think our ability to attract and retain professional staff is something else I'd also like to look at, because I have seen a few things come across that...
...have lost.
It, it makes me wonder, you know, that's not such a hypothetical problem anymore, so.
Thanks. Uh, so if I could ask the administration, do you feel you have enough information to move forward and come back with some?
Well, I, I now, I welcome emails between now and the 27th of July, so we can prep and kind of come back with another iteration of what we have here, as we think about building goals. I don't know about a retreat, per se, or what folks are thinking about that, but we're, you know, the goal is to, the goal is to be working towards goals right yet. That's, that's, that's my mindset anyways, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we do. I think, Mitch, that's fair.
I mean, I think we do need to set a date where we, we come back with generalization and an in-depth conversation that we feed to you in the next, I don't know, two months. I, I just throw it out, I think the second meeting is September. Uh, August is almost really upon us, sadly to say, um, and to use that second meeting in September as the work session that follows up, and is budgetary, um, to have a very short business meeting, and, and allow us now to start to look at having the questions that we ask you. Gives you more time than to say, okay, 27th, I mean, I think, you know, whatever the next meetings are that we have lined up, we have one only in August anyway, um, to me, it would be better to take that time, come back, uh, second meeting in September, and have a work session, that now we start to put numbers to the, to the chart.
Everyone feel okay about, with that? Waiting till, yeah?
Different, uh, suggestion, but Ed, I'd also like to get your thoughts, you know, now or later, just about, as we coalesce this list down, you know, there's, as you said, there's a finite amount of resources that you can put towards it. We already have a number of subcommittees that are out, and some of this stuff, frankly, might need some further investigation. You know, why not, why don't we take a look at, you know, the opportunity, you know, at your direction, to maybe assign some further investigation to some of these subcommittees? I know we have technology in this, but, you know, we have a budget, and we have people that are basically on two committees, and that work could potentially be distributed for, you know, to bring information back to the administration.
Exactly, so, yeah, and I think, I'm fine with the second workshop session being, you know, a targeted conversation around budget, but my thought was, when will we report back special presentations to you? I.e., if you really were interested in block scheduling and hybrids and what, what goes on, et cetera, you know, I'll, I'll put that year-long calendar out there again and say, this is when we'll do it, you know, and, and we'll front-load some of this stuff, so that you've, those key pieces are answered before you get to your budget.
Very good.
But, but I also agree, I'd like to think about that, Tom, and get, and follow up.
Okay.
That'd be good.
Yeah.
I appreciate what you're saying.
Thanks for making us all do more work. That's very nice.
We'll immediately...
An hour later.
Yeah, right, exactly.
On going.
Okay. Um, so, so if we're settled with this for, for tonight, there were just a couple of quick other things, if we could maybe have a few brief committee reports. Um, I know that Ed had something he wanted to talk about, maybe...
JBC was at first.
Dexter, I was just going to say...
Sure. There's a fair amount of stuff to cover, I'll try and run through it quickly. Firstly, we did launch, speaking of websites, we have launched our website, and so if you go out to the city of Portsmouth, you'll see it, the link on the front page, and, and Lisa helped lead that communications subcommittee that, that put that together. Um, I encourage you to go out there. The second communication piece is we scheduled a, a second public information session for July 21st, and that'll be, um, here, in this hall, and the intent will be like the first one we had, I think it was in April, where, um, our, our consultants will, will do an update of design development, talk about where we are on the, the three pieces of the project, the turf field, Grant Street softball field, and the Parrot Ave building. Uh, we'll talk about phasing, and how the construction process will, will maintain the education program at the middle school, and ensure the safety of students and staff and visitors, and then we'll answer questions that the public might have. I would encourage all of you to be there on the 21st at 6:30. Uh, and so, a quick update on all those three pieces, and I think probably you've heard all of this, but I'll say it again anyway. Firstly, on the, the turf field, the high school, I think you know we had some good news as related to the drainage, and there was concern that the drainage pipe needed to be replaced. The city engineering staff actually was terrifically responsive in bringing their expertise to bear, and after surveying that pipe, confirmed that in fact, um, it still has another thirty-plus years of life expectancy, and we're monitoring it as we're working the field. Uh, but the good news is, um, we're, we're on budget, and, and we're on schedule, and we believe that that field will be ready for the first home game of the Portsmouth football team, I guess, right after Labor Day, is the topic.
September 3rd.
September 3rd. So we will be playing this on the, the, um, the AKA middle school field.
AKA.
Granite Street field. Um, we had expected, the news, the news there isn't as good. Gilbain has gotten bids back that are trending above the, the initial estimate that JCJ had put together, when we put our program together. They're refining those bids, but to remain on schedule, JBC authorized Gilbain to proceed with the, um, the demo and abatement of the building itself, as well as authorize the site work, and, and finally authorize the electrical work, because there's a fair amount of lead time in getting the electrical supplies, if we're to remain on schedule. They're going to continue to refine their, their bids and the budget. I think I would predict that, um, as good a work as they will do, and they will bring it down, I think will, will going to be over, would, would be my prediction, and we're going to have to do some work as a committee. But it's still on schedule, if, if, if not quite on budget, and more, more to follow on that one. And so the last one is Parrot Ave, and, and we've, we've talked about where we are in design and development, JCJ and Gilbain continue to work that. I think you're aware of, of the air conditioning issue. Um, the, the JBC has asked that the duck work be included in the detailed design. There's been a lot of discussion about that. Again, like the Granite Street field, the initial estimates that Gilbain has on that project are not as, um, as terrific as we would all have hoped, and because of that, the committee has to go through a value management process to continue to refine the numbers and determine what is in and what is out, to hit our budget. And what we've asked the school board after discussion, the school department after discussion, where, um, John Stokel took the committee through and explained that air conditioning was just a critical education requirement, we've, we've asked them to begin to prioritize what the, what the requirements are for the middle school education program. If indeed we have to make some decisions as a committee, that would, by the way, come back here for your approval, because it affects education, um, we, we want the, the school department to help identify what those priorities are. Um, the other value, and, and we're continuing to go through a value management process in an iterative way. So for example, originally, um, the plan had, had the project replacing all of the windows in the existing middle school. Well, it turns out that they, they brought the, um, the provider of those windows back in to inspect them. Those windows were installed ten or fifteen years ago, I think?
A little, probably about, probably with, under, just under ten.
Maybe under ten years ago.
Peter Torrey's class.
And it, and it turns out that the maintenance has been terrific, they're in terrific shape, and they have a life expectancy of, of thirty or more years. And so rather than replace those windows, Gilbain has said, well, let's just go in and, and do whatever maintenance is necessary and use that money elsewhere. And so they'll continue to go through those sort of iterative processes. We're still on schedule. Um, I, I can say that, um, I still believe we have a really good consulting teams with JCJ and, and Gilbain.
Mm-hmm.
And the last piece of that is, um, there was a subgroup that went to Hartford, the JCJ's, uh, headquarters yesterday, to spend a day in beginning to go through, um, a preliminary selection process for the finishes for the building, both the exterior finish plus the interior finishes, and, and begin to narrow some options down that will be brought back to the, the JBC for consideration and eventually approval. And, um, and that's an interesting process.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's all.
Anything, Lisa or Leslie, you'd add to that?
Well, John Stokel is pulling together, I think, people to do some of that value management for the program that you're talking about, so that should be done within the next few weeks.
Yeah, what we expect is a report back from, from John and the school department by, we, I think we asked him actually for their July 28th meeting, to begin to prioritize the, the education components of the program. So if we needed to recommend a reduction in some way, we would have that guidance from the, the school department.
Great. Kent?
Uh, just a couple of questions. First of all, on the drainage pipe, uh, I, I'm assuming that the city and engineering has put a letter back out, you know, stating it's fine. I'd like to see that. I mean, I don't doubt them, I highly respect them, uh, but we had to replace a major portion of that piping up by the gymnasium, wherever it comes down there, and so forth. And, and again, it's just a matter of, you're putting, you know, a one-million-plus field on top of, of something, and if we have that letter, because seven years from now, if there's a collapse in it, we can say, well, you know, and anything's possible, but everybody runs, and, and again, I, I just feel more comfortable...
It has been documented, and, um, I'll get, I'll get you guys a copy.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, just, just for that. Then the other side of it, and, and two parts, I had a discussion with Ed, and I had a discussion with Steve, um, and it's not a reflection of the JBC, but the minute there's something like that, and, and we did it fairly well with the high school, if you got a surprise, because I remember the biggest surprise we ever had was we couldn't renovate the high school, and we kept that, you know, as best as we could to get to the board members that night. But when you have something like that, if we could just have somebody get that notice out before the next morning you read it in the paper, because you start to get questions on it. And it wasn't the question on that that I've gotten, as much as the question of that this is the middle school field. Uh, and it may be that it was reported, but let's call it what it is. It's a community field for both the high school and the middle school. We're just fortunate that, in the manner that it's being done, we're getting a double hit on this.
Yeah, reimbursed by the state to build a field for the city.
And to sit there and, I mean, the question comes, is the middle school's got first priority. No, it's, 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 it's under Russ Wilson, Russ will then go ahead and do the scheduling on that. It is not one versus the other, it's, it's, it's for, it's for the school system.
Yeah, I think, I think what, what's important to understand, it's for the city, but what's important to understand is that the commitment for state reimbursement is the guarantee that the middle school programs...
You and I know that.
Will be, will be fit within that, within that field structure, and the advantage of having Russ Wilson coordinate both recreation and, and, and school department, is we can be, we can be assured that's going to happen.
Right. But when we go out there and it's publicized that this, you know, the middle school field, goes back to Carol's thing about how we get the communication out to the community, because now the community is mixed on what they actually heard there. You got a one-point-something-million-dollar field for the middle school, and, and I've heard many discussions on that, saying, wait a minute, and, and I've explained, no, it's the community's field, we get our reimbursement at X percent for the whole project for that. And I think that's where we have to make sure we educate the community.
What we can do is, we, we have, we have some information on the website now, specifically about the field. What we'll do is we'll look at it to make certain that it's described properly. I think it is, but...
We worked on that.
Yeah, I think, I think we have it there.
Exactly.
I mean, because frankly, I had the, I had a different concern. I, I had a concern that people in the community wouldn't understand that that field was paid for in part by the state because of the, the middle school renovation and rebuilding. And from my view, I felt that was really important, so that people didn't think that the city was spending 1.1 million dollars rebuilding that field. They're spending...
X percent.
Something significantly less than that, to get, to get a field that's everybody in the city can use.
And when they start to hear increases and they say, okay, and of course, our percentage of increase would have gone up on that. And then, again, back in regards to something that I picked up and I haven't heard, and I know you touched upon it, was the tearing down of the Wentworth School and so forth. Were we underestimated on the asbestos that was in there? So that's driven that up quite a bit.
The abatement is what was one of the drivers, not all of them, but until they got in there and fully looked at it, and fully looked at sort of the subsoil, the soil beneath, in the foundation crawl space.
Yeah.
They underestimated the amount of work that was necessary.
So again, it's these little things, and they're going to just keep coming on. Eventually, when construction starts, it gets a little less, but it's the startup on that. And then I'll just mention in regards to the air conditioning ducts, same type of thing. You're going to get 365 days of use versus the 180 days use out of it, and I support it with restrictions of how we do it, just like at the high school. It's not on constantly, or, you know, it's a very well-maintained system. But, you know, when it comes to, if we have to look at something coming off, I think we have to report back to the city, whether it be the gymnasium or the cafeteria. If they wish to use it for city-type functions in the summertime, they now have that option. So, and that becomes a very valuable asset to the city to have gathering spaces, such as, in fact, this recent heat wave, you know, if you had to have an area to have cooling stations or end like disasters during the ice storms and so forth, these are now facilities that you can properly use.
Lisa, you have it?
Yeah, I was just going to say, add on to the field, hopefully we addressed it in, on the website, but, you know, the other thing about the field is that it was on the critical path to having the state approve that site. And so, you know, I think we want to make sure that people understand that's not an extra, you know, we needed, because we had the site-size waiver, we needed to provide a regulation field for the middle school kids to play on. So that was on the critical path, and it's a win-win really for the middle school and the high school, sharing that resource. And the city?
Anne?
My question is, I wondered if the city has made any decision about their recreation center?
They have not. What we have is...
They're doing the pilings at this point, and that's it?
Yeah, I mean, we, in the design development and when the bids go out for construction, we will ask them to bid on that as an alternative. And so what we'll get back is several options, one just for the middle school and the one gymnasium, one that would include all of that, plus the shell for the youth recreation facility, and a third, I mean, these are broadly, but a third that was completely built out. And what we hope is when we have those back, that the committee along with the city can make some decisions. And so that would happen sometime either late this year or more likely in January of next year, is I think when we expect the bids, bid packages to start coming back, is January of next year.
So I just have a couple of quick, short questions. So I'm curious, so you've launched your website, how did you actually do that? Who actually did the work? Who put the website up? Where is it up and who paid for it?
Well, we worked with city staff to do that.
Okay.
So we worked with...
So you're working with Alan Brady?
Alan Brady, and Pat Remick helped us a lot with the content. And we have a line item and the budget for that.
For that?
Yeah.
Right. Which we no longer have in the school budget. We used to.
Right, but we did, JBC allocated money to specifically support that as part of our project.
And the other thing too, so the Granite Street project might be overbid, overestimated, you don't know.
Maybe.
But, so I'm wondering, what, do you have any idea what has happened or what will happen with any of the eminent domain money that comes back to the city? And can any of that money go towards the building of that facility? Because it's a park and a recreation.
It's possible, since that is a recreation, it may or may not fit. We haven't had that discussion.
Right.
I mean, I can tell you that, you know, Chris Dwyer and I have sort of offline talked about the need to think about all options.
Okay.
If in fact, that part of this project comes in over budget.
Well, yeah, exactly. Because you don't want it to impact the educational decisions.
Rather than impact the Parrot School piece, which is the biggest and the last piece, we'll explore all options.
Good. And I just think the one thing I'm learning this evening, but I think in the process of being on the school board, you know, many of these conversations about the field, I feel like we've had a million times when we were discussing the middle school project before, leading up to the city's bonding vote, you know? But I think the reality is that people tune in and out at different times, and there's a lot of people who are just tuning in now for the first time. So it's really a continual process of having to say the same thing over and over to really make the point. Because I know that in the community, we've had that conversation, specifically about the field.
More than once.
As you said, it was key to the actual...
About education.
Yeah, right. Okay.
And I just want to drive everybody to that website.
Right.
Because, you know, that's where we're trying to have that one-stop shop for all of that information.
And again, if you go out there, what you'll see is that, what we hope is that, again, as you get into construction phase, that it'll link to a Gilbain site, so there'll actually be constant updates with webcams and all the rest. But that really should be, we hope, the primary and initial source of all information. That'll be the repository of it. And I guess what I'd ask you guys is, as you see things that you, content that you think we're missing, I think we have the right structure.
Yep.
The right framework, but if there's...
It'll need tweaking.
But if there's content that we think we should be adding, let us know that.
Okay.
Right, and to Mitch's point, that field project has to do with eminent domain. It does not have to do with the educational programming of the middle school, so.
Right. Oh, good point.
Yeah.
That I brought up.
Yes.
Efficiencies. Oh, Tom, did you want to report a little bit out on the technology committee meeting we had?
I've been waiting.
Sorry.
Not your chance.
So the, our past meeting really focused in on trying to really boil down where and what components we wanted to take a look at from a technology audit. We really have boiled it down to three key areas, because there's frankly a lot of information that we already have, and knowing that we probably don't have a tremendous amount of money, but we want to be efficient and be very focused in on what the technology audit is, the three areas that we focused in on are, one, a user interface, storage requirements as well as a wireless network. And the key here is that all these, these three things that make up this triangle really are all integrated, because one of the things that we start taking a look at is, from a technology plan perspective, and wanting teachers to be able to build and integrate technology, is how do teachers, students, and faculty actually access the system? And knowing full well that we want to be able to provide an equal platform, we started taking a look at the actual user interface that people are going to be using, and wanting to be able to have something that we can maintain, grow, and knowing full well that we have a unfunded mandate, you know, which is this digital portfolio that we want to be able to start, you know, with kids coming in at the K-level and carry all the way through. So we end up having 13 years of information that we want to be able to collect, and how do we make sure that people have access to it and that we can care for it? Which then leads into, you know, this concept of storage, which really is, now we're collecting and having teachers and students start to use the technology, you know, we now, today, have the ability to do some levels of storage, but it's all very much attached storage, and we want to be able, then be able to say, you know, we're moving into this ubiquitous environment, where a lot of schools have started to go to a one-to-one environment. You know, we're not frankly convinced that one-to-one, in the way it has been implemented in other schools is necessarily the right way, but having ubiquitous access to that information is key. So you could be home, you could be at the public library, you could be on vacation, but being able to have access to coursework, work that you've previously done, is key. So having that component of the storage. And then also looking from a wireless standpoint, that, you know, that level of ubiquity can possibly leverage the ability to bring other devices onto the campus, so that we have people who suddenly are going to have their own device, that they'll walk in, whatever that may be, it could be a netbook, but having that user interface that we could then assign to someone's, you know, mobile device. Because of course, you know, when you look at the mobile environments, if we could remove voice and texting from a mobile device, that would solve 98% of all schools' problems, but it would still allow the kids and students to be able to learn and have technology that they're comfortable with to be able to use as a learning tool. So that wireless environment is something that we're trying to take a look at. So that's a quick summation of what we've kind of boiled down to, is sort of this three-point area that we want to focus in from a technology audit perspective.
Okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to share the efficiencies committee's minutes. I talked with Chairman Hedmanek, and he thought it was appropriate. One of the things I, in my conversation with Kent about the no surprises with the JBC and read it in the papers, I realized there are a lot of committees out there and a lot of information, and the board doesn't have access to all of this. So in the future, I promise to just send these minutes out as soon as I receive them, so that folks have some sense of what's going on. I don't know, there is a strict protocol the JBC has put together about communication. Maybe there's some way to tweak that so that we can get board members, I didn't even think about it, you know, you just get kind of in a tunnel and you're not thinking about how it impacts others, but I think it's worthy of some kind of discussion at the communications subcommittee level, Lisa.
You're on that too.
So I just, I don't know if anyone wants to report out. I know that there's another meeting July 22nd. Basically, there'll be a report out on all the external, the snow plowing, fields, maintenance, that, that kind of process coming a week from Thursday. But you have the minutes, and I promise to get them out as soon as I receive them in the future.
Okay. Everyone else? Good. Okay, when's our next meeting?
The 27th of July.
27th of July. And where is that?
I believe it's slated right here for City Hall.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Second? Fall in favor? Thank you very much. Have a good night.